So, moving to the next phase of life transformation program. Today we have a guest here. Guests came or you have family members come. And she is part of our life transformation program. She is part of our team. And most importantly and beautifully, she is a sister to me, a friend to me, a guide to me. And I welcome Linu Kapoordi for this beautiful session she is taking today. Linu Didi, she is a yoga therapist from Pune. She is AMCOM MBA and working in a corporate. She is taking the session on experiencing inner peace, positivity and inner balance. We can experience our inner peace, balance and positivity with yoga techniques. So, we will meet again. And after the session, I will share few more secrets. But let's meet her and she is a beautiful personality in and out. I have been with her for 3 years. I have lived with her, seen her, met her. There are many qualities, many such qualities. Such beautiful characters. When you learn, because we can learn something from this world. And when someone comes to us as a human being, we learn in neuro-linguistic programming in NLP. That if you want to meet someone for 5 minutes, then what can we teach them? What can we teach them? What values can we put them? That is more important. So, even if we meet in our lives, it's really a blessing from the divine. When we meet with any soul, then we get something from them. And that is why we meet Linu Didi and me. And now from past 3 years, we are connected. And it's a very beautiful relationship God has given to me. So, I welcome Linu Didi to please take the session over to you. Please open your mic and camera.
Hello everyone. Hello everyone. Thank you so much for the wonderful, wonderful introduction. I hope you all can hear me.
Yes, the voice is coming.
The voice is coming, right? First of all, you have taken a wonderful session. Karabjit. And to all of you, Ganesha Chaturthi is very, very happy. Today is a very happy day. I wish everyone good health and luck. Live a happy life to all of you. Then we will start the session. And then we can chit chat after the session for sure. Okay. We will start with opening prayer. Raise your palms in Namaskar Mudra, close your eyes. Om Sahana Vavatu Sahana Bhunaktu Sahaviyam Karavahai Om Shant Shant Shantihi Gently up your palms. Place it on your eyes and relax. Hello everyone. Sit comfortably in Sukhasan or Badrasan. Gently close your eyes. Place your palms on your knees in chin Mudra. Take a deep breath in and exhale slowly. Once again. Inhale deeply. And relax with the breathe out. Take another deep breath in. And breathe out. As we begin, let's set an intention to bring calmness, energy, peace to our body and mind. So, we will do neck rotations, neck exercises, shoulder rotations. We will be doing chest expansion and we will be doing sitting Tadasan. After that, we will be doing the Pranayama. So, we will begin with neck rotations. Slowly drop your chin down. Begin to raise your neck with inhalation, neck up. Mean the stretch. Exhale, chin down. Inhale, neck up. Exhale. Chin down.
They take it in Hindi if possible.
Exhale, chin down. Two more rounds. Inhale, neck up. Exhale, chin down. Inhale, neck up. Exhale, chin down. Come to the center and relax. Now we will be doing sideways. We will begin with left side. Inhale. Turn to your left. Feel the side stretch on the neck. Center. Inhale. Right. Center. Left. Center. Inhale. Right. Center. Left. Center. We will do it for two more rounds. Inhale, right. Center. Left. Center. One last round. Feel the stretch on the right. Center and relax. Now slowly drop your chin down and begin with rotation. We will do it clockwise and anti-clockwise. Drop your chin down from left to right. Very slowly and gently rotate your neck. From left to right. And from the right. Inhale. And exhale out to the left. We will repeat this for four more rounds. Chin down. From left. Gently and very slowly to the right. And from the right. Slowly come back to the left. Please do it for two more rounds. Keep your movements slow and mindful. If anyone is having cervical issues, please do half rotations only.
Didi take it in Hindi also, Hindi and English mix.
Okay. If someone has cervical issue, pain, then half rotations can be done. Alright. After finishing this round, come back to the center and relax. Now we will begin with shoulder rotations. Place your fingertips on your shoulders. Rotate your elbows forward in a big circle. We will do it in the forward direction first 5 times and then backward 5 times. So, place your fingers. Put your fingers on your shoulders. Rotate your elbows forward in a big circle. Inhale. Up. Exhale. Down. Inhale. Up. Exhale. Down. Inhale. Up. Exhale. Down. Inhale, expand your chest. Exhale. Down. Feel the stretch on the back, on the shoulders. One last round. Inhale, up. Exhale, down. And relax. Now we will be doing backward. Place your fingers again on your shoulders. Inhale, up. Exhale, down. Inhale, up. Exhale, down. Inhale, up. Exhale, down. Inhale, up. Exhale, down. One last round. Inhale, up. Exhale, down. Release any tension in the shoulders. Feel them loosening. And relax. Relax. Now we will be doing chest expansion. Bring your palms in front of each other's chest panel to each other. Inhale, open your arms wide. Chest lifted. Exhale, bring the palms together in front of the chest. Open your arms slowly. Stretch your chest. Exhale while opening your palms in front of the chest. We will repeat for three more rounds. Inhale. Expand. Open up your lungs. Exhale, come back to the center. Inhale, expand your chest. Exhale slowly. Come back to the center. One last round. Inhale, expand your chest. Exhale, come back to the center. And relax. Now we will be doing sitting Tadasan. Interlock your fingers. Open your hands. Stretch your arms upward. Palms facing the sky. Open your arms. Open your hands. Open your arms. Inhale and stretch the spine tall. Open your spine. As you reach up, hold. Exhale and release. Again. Inhale, up. With another inhalation, stretch up. Hold. Exhale, come back. One last round. Inhale, stretch up. Exhale. Come back. And relax. Now we will be doing Brahmari Pranayama and Om chanting. So, you can close your eyes in the entire session. Please follow my instructions. When I request you to close your eyes, your eyes should remain closed. Unless you feel uncomfortable. But if you close your eyes, it will be better. So, I will tell you the instructions before that. We can do Brahmari Pranayama with Shanmukhi Mudra. Without Shanmukhi Mudra. I don't know whether you know Shanmukhi Mudra. But I can tell you one more time. You have to place your fingers on the eyelids, sides of the nose. Up lips, lower lips. Like this. And we will shut our thumbs. We will inhale. Then we will shut our thumbs. And we have to create humming bee sound. It sounds like bee. Like this. So, exhalation happens inside our mouth. We will inhale. Shanmukhi Mudra. Inhale. Close and create the humming sound. Exhale, it happens inside our mouth. We can do without Shanmukhi Mudra also. By just simply inhalation. Close your ears and start with the humming sound. How long can we comfortably sound it? When we can hear it automatically. We can again inhale and do it again. So, we will be doing Brahmari Pranayama for 5 rounds. And if someone has ear infection or has any discomfort in the ears, then you can do it without it. Just make the humming bee sound by inhalation. Inhalation and you can make the humming bee sound. Alright, close your eyes. Use your thumbs to gently close your ears. You can adopt Shanmukhi Mudra. Or you can do without Shanmukhi Mudra also. Index and middle fingers can rest slightly on the eyelids. Ring fingers on the nose bridge. Little and the other finger around the lips. Take a deep breath in. As you exhale, you have to produce humming sound. Let's begin together. Inhale. 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 And relax. Eyes remain closed. Feel the vibrations of Brahmari Pranayama. It brings calmness and it improves our mind focus. It enhances our nervous system. Feel the soothing vibration in your head, on your face. Take a deep breath in. Breathe out and relax. Sit comfortably with spine straight. Take a deep inhalation again. Exhale out and relax. Now we will be doing Om chanting. We will inhale and as you exhale, we will chant the sound Om in 3 parts. A, U, Ma. So, let the sound come naturally. And feel it vibrating on your chest, on your throat and on your head. We will inhale together. And create the sound of A, U, Ma. Let's do it together. Inhale. 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 Feel the vibrations of Om Kara, Om chanting. Om is considered the three modal sound of the universe. It represents the creation. A represents the creation. U represents preservation. And Ma represents transformation. So, chanting Om brings balance and connects us to the inner peace. When we chant Om, the vibrations are created in our heads, in our chest, in our throat. That gives us balance and inner peace. If we practice this regularly, then it will have a lot of benefits. Now I request everyone to lie down on their mats. Eyes remain closed.
We can't see you.
One second. Yeah. I request all of you to lie down on their mats and relax.
We will sit on our mats in Shavasana and please turn on all of your videos. Everybody. Just a second. Over to you.
Lie down in Shavasana. Legs apart, arms apart. Open your legs. Open your arms. Gently move your whole body. Make yourself comfortable and relax completely. Bring your awareness to the tip of your toes. Gently move your toes. And relax. Sensitize the soles of your feet. Loosen the ankle joints. Relax the calf muscles. Gently pull up the kneecaps. Relax and release. Relax your thigh muscles. Open your thigh muscles. Open your buttock muscles. Loosen the hip joints. Relax the pelvic region. Relax the waist region. Totally relax the lower part of your body. Relax. Relax. Now we will chant Akara altogether. Inhale. Feel the vibrations of Akara in the lower part of your body. Gently bring your awareness to your abdominal region. Open your stomach area. Observe your stomach movements. Relax your abdominal muscles. Open your stomach muscles. Relax your chest muscles. Gently bring your awareness to your lower back. Open your lower back. Loosen all the vertebral joints. Open your vertebrae joints one by one. Relax the muscles in the backbone. Relax the backbone muscles. Relax the mid背back. Relax the shoulder blades. Open your limbs. Open your upper back muscles. Totally relax your back. Relax. Shift your awareness to the tip of your fingers. Open your fingers. Gently move them and sensitize. Relax your fingers one by one. Relax your palms. Open your hands. Open your wrist joint. Loosen your wrist joints and relax. Open your forearms. Open your elbows. Loosen your elbow joints and relax. Relax your arms. Slowly turn your head to the right. Slowly to the left. Bring back to the center. Relax the muscles and nerves of the neck. Relax the middle part of your body. Totally relax. Now, we will chant Ukara altogether. Inhale. Feel the vibrations of Ukara. In the middle part of your body. Gently bring your awareness to your head region. Relax your chin. Relax your lower jaw, upper jaw. Relax the lower gums, upper gums. Relax your upper teeth, lower teeth. Relax your tongue. Relax your upper palate. Relax your throat, your vocal cords. Gently shift your awareness to your lips. Relax your lower and upper lips. Shift your awareness to your nose. Just observe your nostrils. As you exhale. Feel the cool air. As you inhale. Feel the warm air. Observe for few seconds. And relax. Relax your cheek muscles. Feel the heaviness on the cheek. And have a beautiful smile on your face. Relax your eyes. Relax your eye muscles. Feel the heaviness on the eyes. Relax your eyelids, your eyebrows. And in between the eyebrows, relax your forehead. Relax your temple muscles. Relax your ears. Sides of the head. Relax the back of the head. Relax the crown of the head. Relax your head region. Totally relax. Now, we will chant Makara altogether. Inhale deeply. Feel the vibrations of Makara. In the lower part, in the head of head region. Feel the vibrations of Makara in the head region, in the upper region of your body. Now, observe your whole body from toes to your head and relax. Now, we will chant Auma in single breath. Feel the resonance in the body while chanting. Inhale. Slowly come out of the body consciousness and visualize your body. On the ground, completely collapsed. Imagine the vast view, beautiful sky. Visualize the limitless blue sky. Expand your awareness as vast as the blue sky. Merge your mind into the blue sky. You are becoming this blue sky. You are a part of this blue sky. Enjoy the infinite bliss. The blissfulness state of silence. Slowly come back to the consciousness. Feel the resonance throughout your body. We will chant Auma one more time. Inhale. Feel the resonance throughout the body. The soothing and massaging effect from head to toe. Now gently move your whole body. Feel the lightness. Alertness. And movement of the energy throughout your body. Slowly bring your legs together. Hands by the side of your body. You can gently turn to your left and with the help of your elbow, gently and very slowly you can sit down in sukhasan. Eyes remain closed. You end the session with the prayer. Om Sarve Bhavantu Sukhinaha. Sarve Santu Niramaya. Sarve Bhadrani Pashanthu. Ma Kasthi Dukkha Bhavay. Om Shanti, Shanti, Shanti. Gently rub your palms. Make it warm and place it on your eyes. Loosen your hands. Place it on your eyes. Gently and very slowly open your eyes by looking at your hands and you can. Place your hands all over your body. And relax. Thank you everyone for participating in Om. Over to you, Karam.
Thank you, thank you so much, Lino Di for a wonderful session, for a peaceful session. It had everything. You touched everything.
I think in between, it was a little bit wrong and then participants were lying down. My apologies for that.
Thank you, thank you for being there. You have taken time from your busy schedule to do a life transformation program. So, thank you.
Absolutely, very much. I like that we all learn from each other and looking at this wonderful, wonderful participant. Everyone wakes up, participates, attends classes at 5:00. They do a lot for their health. Your mind and body are very, very important. Karam ji is doing a lot, she is doing a great and lovely, wonderful job she is doing for all of you. So my humble request, you should attend classes regularly and definitely your life will change very well and you will feel it.
Yes. Any more questions? If you have any questions about yoga, life or any other type of question. Because Lino Di is a dynamic personality and she lives in Pune, works in a corporate and. We know each other for 3 years and we are classmates in SBYASA Swami Venkana University. We are classmates. And she is a beautiful soul in and out. So please don't miss a chance to ask anything. If you want to ask anything, please don't miss a chance. Because you will get very deep insightful answers from us. Anything you want to ask. Please come up with the questions if you want to ask anything about life. Yeah, very important question, how, Suman Vishnoi ji is asking, how to manage personal and professional life?
How to manage personal and professional life is first of all, our current life is stressful. We say that we don't have time. But I would say, we can save half an hour for ourselves. If not one hour, everyone says that we don't have time for worship. We don't have time for exercise. But I myself am a working professional. From when I take my time, I take one hour. We can do a lot of worship in a day. It takes only 15 to 20 minutes to worship. And if we worship peacefully, then it takes another 15 to 20 minutes. So in total, if we worship for 15 minutes, we can save up to that amount of general exercises. And when we do it, we have worship, prayer, meditation, ascension, meditation, meditation. That has a huge effect on our professional front. So when we do our worship, our breath and mind and body are affected. Then when we start our daily practice, our professional front also. Then we don't have much confusion, our focus is good, our mental clarity is better. Our productivity increases. What we do is easy to do. Is what I have observed. But this will happen after you do it. You should worship, you should chant, you should meditate. Whatever you do in your daily routine, you should include it. Simple anulong velong, brahmi worship, Om chanting. Or you have a mantra or name. And you are joined with Karam. You do your daily practice from 5:00 to 6:00 or 6:00 to 7:00. After you start your day, you will get a lot of benefits. But you need to take time for yourself. You need to cultivate effort, motivation. That is very, very important. Then you will see that you can maintain a balance between the personal and the professional life.
So one more question is, sister, if you have a great desire to do anything, what would you do?
Like I said, as I said, we need to take time for ourselves. Just like when we go to the doctor's room. And we say that we will suffer cold, we will have fever, we will have fever, we will have headaches. What will he do? He will write a prescription for us and he will say that we should eat this medicine for 3 days or 5 days. This precaution follows, this prevention happens. He comes to me and tells me what effect it has. If we don't eat this medicine, if we don't take prevention, and we go to the doctor's room and say that nothing is wrong, how will it happen? Taking medicine is necessary for ourselves, prevention is also necessary for us and then we will be healthy. And hope upon hope prayers, if we come with positive energy, cleanse our negative aura and do well in our worship, meditation, spiritual diet, spiritual diet. Do good deeds. Then our body will automatically start motivating us. How to do it? It is difficult to start. If it is difficult to start, you cannot do it alone. That is why there are centers like Karam Wellness Center. You can join Karam. If we are alone, it feels like we have a doubt that we are not doing well. We have done it for 2 days, we feel motivation from the third day. We are not doing well. So if you cannot do it alone, you should join someone else. If you do it with someone else, you will see that you will start to do it day by day. Your body will automatically motivate you because you will start to feel something good. You will see changes. Three, it will be like this, it will be like this, it will be like this. To develop, you need to push yourself a little bit. But just like you start doing it, it will be like this. Just like we do brush every day, we do bath every day, we do housework every day, we wake up, sit up. This is how you can practice your life. Then you will not feel pressure and you will not have doubts.
So the next question is, sister. If you have a responsibility for work. Time is short. How can you take time?
Very good question, very beautiful question. This question arises like that, we do not have time. I know if we are working professionals or housewife, I say that housewives are the most important. So if you can keep a house help, you should give some delegation. If you have members in your house, you should give some delegation. All of your board, board is my job, it will happen to me. Don't think like that, because we are ladies, what happens is that I will not do it without you. It is not like this. If you have a house help, you should keep it, you should give it to your members. You can give some work to your members. Small or big work. Or buy something from the store, you can order everything. या बाजार से कुछ लाना, आजकल तो वैसी order हो जाता है सब कुछ, शिक्की कर सकते हो, बिलिंगेट कर सकते हो, घर पे ए जाता है. तो time जो है ना, वो manage करना है, और अगर बहुत सारे काम है, suppose आपके पास 10, 5 important responsibilities है की ये 5 काम तो मुझे ही करने हैं. ये मैं बाकी किसी को नहीं दे सकती. तो उन पांच कामों में से आपकी दो सबसे important काम क्या है? जो priority पे जो आपके काम है, वो दो कामों को पहले करो. तो जब वो ये दो important काम पहले finish हो जाते हैं, तो थोड़ा mentally हमारा release हो रहा है, ठीक है, मैंने ये दो important काम कर लिया आराम से. बाकी के तीन काम में धीरे-धीरे कर सकती हूं. एकदम से अगर हम पांचों या सातों काम एक साथ tension ले लेंगे और करने लग जाएंगे, तो फिर अपने लिए समय नहीं निकल पाता. क्योंकि हम वो stress जब हो जाते हैं mentally. तो वैसे ही mentally stress, हमारी physical body पे भी affect होता है, हम lazy feel करने लग जाते हैं, lethargy feel करने जाते हैं, आलस ए जाता है. Money नहीं करता फिर काम करने का. बाकी सारे जो important काम है, फिर भी हम घसीट-घसीट के कर लेंगे, लेकिन अपने लिए नहीं करेंगे. तो मैं यही बोलूंगी की अगर आपके, आपका बहुत सारी responsibilities है, बहुत सारा काम है, उसको divide कर लो. अगर कोई ऐसा काम है जो आप दो दिन बाद भी कर सकते हो, तो दो दिन बाद करो. जो priority पे है उसको धीरे-धीरे करो, और break लेके करो, ऐसे नहीं की आप पांच घंटे लगे हुए हो, काम ही करते जा रहे हो. So, I don't know like house, घर के काम अलग होते हैं, आपके office के professional life, if you are working, आपके वो अलग काम है. तो कुछ responsibilities, कुछ काम जो है, आप help लीजिए दूसरों की, आप मदद मांगिए, उनसे करवाइए. House help से करवाइए, घर के members को अपना काम थोड़ा से दे दीजिए, बाकी अपने लिए समय निकालिए थोड़ा सा.
Yeah, so the next question is, disease reversal में physical exercise, pranayam और meditation का timing का ratio क्या होना चाहिए?
Timing, मतलब I didn't get the question, come again.
They're asking की डिजीज है body में और उसको हमें reverse करना है. तो physical exercise है, एक है अपना yoga asanas exercises, एक है pranayam और एक है meditation. तो तीनों के लिए time का ratio क्या होना चाहिए? How much time exercise, how much time pranayam, how much time meditation?
तीनों चीजें ही important है, exercise भी important है, pranayam भी important है, meditation भी important है. But मैं यह बोलूंगी, हर एक का disease, हर एक की जो issue है, health issue है, वो अलग-अलग है. किसी का severe है, किसी का बहुत ज्यादा नहीं है, अभी शुरुआत ही हुआ है. तो और क्या issue है, आपको health issue, आपका health concern क्या है, उसपे भी निर्भर करता है. So, again तीनों चीजें important है, physical exercise से अपने benefit होते हैं. और physical exercise में भी सब लोग, सब physical exercises नहीं कर सकते, तो moderation के साथ कर सकते हैं. और pranayam जो है, वो भी important है, हमारी breathing, हमारी जो breath exercises है, वो जो कमल दिखाती है ना, हमारे यहां पर. वो आसन भी बाद में दिखाएगा, पहले हमारे pranayam बहुत जरूरी है. और meditation से हमको शांति मिलती है, हमारा man की clarity ए जाती है, हमारे life थोड़ी easy हो जाती है. तो मैं यह बोलूंगी, आप खुद देखिए. की मैं पंद्रह minute निकल पा रही हूं, क्योंकि मैं पंद्रह minute exercise करूंगी. या मैं 10 minute pranayam के लिए निकल पा रही हूं, तो मैं 10 minute करूं. आपको अगर शुरू पे लगता है, मैं सिर्फ anulom vilom करना चाहती हूं, आप सिर्फ anulom vilom से start कीजिए. धीरे-धीरे आप पांच minute भ्रामरी भी कर सकते हैं, तो आप भ्रामरी को भी include कर लीजिए. It depends on person to person, it depends on you know each health issue and health concern. ऐसा नहीं है की यार वो कोई बोलता है की मैं तो आधा घंटा meditation करती हूं तो, तुमको भी आधा घंटा meditation करनी चाहिए, नहीं. आप पांच minute meditation से भी शुरुआत कर सकते हैं. आपको लगता है मैं सिर्फ 10 minute ही बैठ पाती, मेरे back में बहुत issue है, किसी को अगर spine का issue है. तो आप पांच minute में meditation से start कर सकते हैं, not necessary की आपको भी आधा घंटा ही करना है. आप देखेंगे धीरे-धीरे पांच minute, 10 minute, पंद्रह minute, आप धीरे-धीरे उसको, duration को बढ़ा सकते हैं अपने हिसाब से. So, इसका yoga का वैसे भी जो definition है, स्थिरम, सुखम, आसनम. जिसमें हम स्थिरता के साथ बैठ पाए, सुख महसूस कर पाए, उसी को आसन लिया थे. तो ऐसा नहीं है की हम uncomfortable महसूस हो रहे हैं, दर्द होती जा रही है, तो आप बोलो यार ये सब एक घंटा करते हैं, मैं भी एक घंटा ही करूंगी. Not necessary. तो धीरे-धीरे आप देखोगे, अगर आप धीरे से, छोटा-छोटा समय से start करोगे, duration से. Gradually आप duration, आपकी बढ़नी शुरू हो जाएगी, आपकी body में flexibility आएगी, आपकी स्वास बेहतर हो जाएंगे. और आपका mental clarity भी आने शुरू हो जाएगी. तब आप gradually देखेंगे, आपका जो health issue है, वो भी reverse होना start हो जाएगा. जैसे-जैसे health issue, you know, reverse होना start हो जाएगा, धीरे-धीरे ठीक होना start हो जाएगा. आप और ज्यादा exercise कर पाओगे, आप और अच्छे से pranayam कर पाओगे, आप और अच्छे से meditation कर पाओगे. So, ये सबके लिए अलग-अलग है.
And the last question is, how do you handle sudden stress in job? Due to work pressure or due to a irritating boss?
Very good question again. तो अगर कोई, देखो, irritating boss हो सकता है, irritating colleagues हो सकते हैं, कभी-कभी work pressure ए सकता है, सबको आता है. तो उसमें I would suggest की एक तो you should take, always take a pause, अपनी ego पे मत लीजिए. वो उसकी तकलीफ है की वो गुस्सा कर रहे हैं, उनकी तकलीफ है की वो irritated हो रहे हैं, वो उनकी तकलीफ है की वो खराब तरीके से बात कर रहे हैं. अपनी ego पे मत लीजिए, थोड़ा सा pause कीजिए. Hope on a prayer कीजिए, जब आप वो करते हैं, तो या तो आपका boss change हो जाएगा. या आपका जो काम है वो easy हो जाएगा, या आप देखेंगे आपके process ही change होगा. अगर आप एक particular process में है, जहां पे बहुत ही ज्यादा burdensome work है, तो आप gradually देखेंगे, आपका process दूसरे person में shift कर देंगे आपको. तो hope on a prayer कर सकते हैं, उनके लिए कर सकते हैं, अगर आपको boss से लगता है की ये तो बहुत ही khadus boss है, या ये तो बहुत ही irritated करता है. बहुत ही बुरे तरीके से बात करता है. तो आपको भी same aggressiveness के साथ या same तरीके से बात करने की कोई भी जरूरत नहीं है. वो अपना mental, you know, peace खो चुका है, इसीलिए वो ऐसे बात कर रहा है, not necessary की हम भी हमका mental peace खो के उसको जवाब दे, not necessary. तो he is basically sick, या हमारे कुछ colleagues होते हैं जो हमारी back bitching करते हैं, back biting करते हैं. तो उसमें अपने आप को काम रखी, और जब आप ये practices करते हैं, आप देखेंगे आपको फर्क ही नहीं पड़ेगा. आप अपने pace से, जब आप अपना hundred percent देके काम कर रहे हैं, तो आपको पता है की मैंने अपना काम पूरा किया है. और अगर आपकी plate में already 10 चीजें हैं और आप 11 चीज नहीं कर सकते, आप convey कीजिए, you should speak it up. की मेरे पास already I am occupied with 10 different things. मैं ये eleventh करूंगी, after finishing these 10. क्या मैं इन 10 को छोड़ दू, अगर ये important है, तो मैं कर देती हूं, उसको मना मत करो, किसी भी काम के लिए मना मत करो. बोलो I am very blessed and thankful की मुझे इतना अच्छा और इतना सारा काम मिला, मैं ये भी कर दूंगी. लेकिन पहले मैं ये finish कर लूं जो आपने दिया था, तो उसको खुद ही realize हो जाएगा की ये तो already बेचारी 10 काम कर रही है, मैं 11वां और दे रहा हूं, तो कैसे करेगी? या फिर वो आपको खुद ही बोल देगा की हाँ, ये important है, ये पहले कर दो, priority ये बाद में कर लेगा. तो आपका तो balance हो गया ना, so you have to balance your work, you don't have to, you know. Unnecessary get irritated or agitated की, ये इतना सारा ए गया, मैं कैसे करूंगा, तो जो पहले वाला है वो भी खराब हो जाएगा. और उसमें भी मैं सबसे पहले वो वही, आप hope on a prayer कीजिए, अपने boss का नाम लेके, या तो वही polite हो जाएगा, या तो वही shift हो जाएगा वहां से. आपकी जो positivity है ना, वो बरकरा रहनी चाहिए, आगे-पीछे कुछ भी हो रहा है, आपको फर्क ही नहीं बनना चाहिए.
I think yoga has helped us a lot, yog के.
A lot, a lot. I myself have seen lot of changes in myself. And Karan Jit is already there to help you guys. आपको कुछ भी कभी भी लगता है की नहीं मैंने इतना कर लिया, मैं practice कर रही हूं, मुझसे नहीं हो रहा. Karan Jit is always there to help you and guide you, she is a wonderful, wonderful human being. इसको इतना अच्छा लगता है ना, दूसरों की मदद करके, दूसरे खुश होते हैं, ये खुश हो जाती है. So, you can always take help and always take guidance, और हमने भी ऐसे ही अपनी journey start की थी. मैंने अपनी journey Karan Jit की, Karan Jit की motivation के through start की थी. I was never into yoga, I was never into this line, मैं तो ये पढ़ाई करने भी नहीं वाली थी. But. Like I said, जब हमने शुरुआत की, I also got lot of motivation from Karan Jit. इसने मुझे बोला नहीं दीदी, अभी आपने one month का किया है, इतना अच्छा, इतना सुंदर, हम दो साल का पूरा course भी करेंगे. और हमारी journey बहुत अच्छी रही, और हम बहुत अच्छे से. And I am glad today that we did this course together, because it's a wonderful, wonderful blessing and learning everybody should do.
बिल्कुल. हर किसी को. जो पढ़ सकते हैं, जो कर सकते हैं, उन्हें तो योग की पढ़ाई करनी ही चाहिए, life changes. पूरे-पूरी जिंदगी बदल जाती है, actually जब आप उसे process में होते हैं ना, एक student बन जाते हैं फिर से. किताबें पढ़ रहे हैं, exam दे रहे हैं, कर रहे हैं चीजें दोबारा. I, I am seriously so happy की हम दो साल एक साथ, एक साथ पढ़ते हैं, एक साथ एक ही कमरे में रहते हैं. एक साथ हम exams की तैयारी करते, एक साथ exams देते हैं, this is such a wonderful, you know. Journey of MSC yoga therapy, it's not just a degree but it's a life changing program.
Karan Jit is a wonderful, wonderful teacher, I would say again, आप please उनके साथ जुड़िए और अपनी knowledge को बढ़ाइए.